I will call to order the meeting of the town council July ninth, 2024. I will start with the pledge allegiance and a moment of silence. Please stand. Thank you. The next item on our agenda, number four, are propretations, presentations. We don't have any, we're good, right? Yeah?
Could I just follow up? Soccer team, yeah, are we still looking into some way to make that in? There, I know it wasn't gonna be a proclamation, but there.
Yep.
Okay.
Invite him in, I believe, is the last thing.
Oh.
Yeah.
Let's begin.
Yeah, I just was waiting to find out whether that's.
Okay, got.
When, I don't, whenever.
What it means.
When it, yeah.
Okay. You want me to reach out to Mr. Garrett?
Yeah.
Well, I'm happy to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll have them, all right, that's what we talked about, you know, just have them there. Yeah, thank you. Uh, next item, number five on our agenda is public petitions, communications, and public participation. This is on any subject within the jurisdiction of the town council. I would give it two minutes, two-minute limit on this. Uh, I will remind everyone that we do also have a public hearing, which will be the next thing. Uh, so if you have comments about the public hearing item, uh, we would ask that you save those to the public hearing item. But that being said, we will open up for public petitions, communications, and public participation. We'll alternate between in-person and virtually. Anyone like to start?
Sean Lappin, one sixty-eight Mountain Spring Road. Hello, town council. Here I am, another week, another couple of weeks later, with another failed well water test result, and still no clear action plan in place. My well tested positive for coliform bacteria yet again. This is the fourth failed test result, and this test was conducted directly off the pressure tank inside my home by a representative from the engineering group Langen, who was very meticulous in making sure that she did not contaminate the sample. In speaking with Mike Wilkinson from the town, I suggested a rather standard and simple fix for this issue that I would be willing to sign off on for this particular problem, the installation of a UV filter. This would kill any and all bacteria and is a fairly common practice in areas where potential water sources could be contaminated or for just peace of mind. These types of filters are installed in restaurants and other public facing, public facing places to ensure the water is not contaminated. The response that I received from Mike after suggesting that this was, suggesting this was non-committal and did not include any timelines. He said that he would have to confer with Langen, with the Road Cell Task Force, of which is made up part of this, part by this council, and with the town's insurance carrier. How long is needed to approve a rather standard system to mitigate an issue such as this? To my knowledge, this would not be more than a thousand to two thousand dollars. I have spoken with Banner Water and as well as Connecticut Water about these types of systems, and these are fairly standard and common, and not all that difficult to install. I have mentioned before about my displeasure at the speed of which the town's insurance carrier makes decisions about my property, and have provided numerous examples of why my concerns are valid. For example, having to wait a year to make a decision after my previous well was deemed not productive. We are nearing the finish line with this property, I hope, and I would like to get this wrapped up as I have other things I could be doing with my time, such as being there for my newborn child, and I'm sure the town council also has better things to do than listen to me every two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone online who would like to speak? You can raise your Zoom hand or press star nine. Go back to the room. Anyone else in the room like to speak?
I'm also gonna be really quick, because I didn't realize you had a public hearing tonight, so. So just, um, I'm here to address you guys, um, to, to speak about the damage that I'm sure that you all are aware of um, to the property that my family own, at the Interstate eighty-four, um, exit area, um, so.
Can you give your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mary Lee Bebe, now you both are.
Thank you.
Um, and I will submit this for the record.
Yeah.
Uh, dear counselors, what kind of community do we live in? What kind of community do we want to live in? After more than forty years of talent residency, after raising and educating my children here, after volunteering service to the town for more than twenty-eight years and counting, after the latest destruction of our property at the I eighty-four exit ramp, and I have photos attached, and a fifth trip to the Connecticut State Police, I'm wondering, are we a community that respects the taxpayers' private property rights, that respects freedom of expression, that abides the law? Are we a community that stands together against criminals, thugs, and hatred? This latest destruction of our property was caused by a sign that read "No kings in America." It was posted on July fourth, the seminal holiday celebrating a people's declaration that they henceforth refuse to live under a king and that they reject as unnatural and unfair the idea of absolutism and authoritarianism, the celebration of an astounding declaration that all men are created equal. For the first time in modern history, a major society declared that they would construct a democratic republic and govern themselves by majority consent. It was an extremely flawed start, but letters between Jefferson and Adams indicate that they did not know if it could succeed. With toil and blood and sacrifice, it did succeed, and it changed the entire world, and that's reason for unanimous celebration. And for that sentiment, fellow citizen or citizens who apparently disagrees with the idea of self-governance, destroyed our property, and then followed up last night with theft of items from my private address. It was a thug's message of, I know where you live. I'm not a hidden figure, the vast majority of folks know that I maintain the structure at the I eighty-four exit and placed signs and banners on it. Those who know me and my service in this community know that I am more than willing to discuss, debate, and examine just about any issue. The people who have destroyed our property now and in the past are bullies and cowards. Astoundingly, several fellow citizens, our keyboard warriors on social media who have resorted to victim blaming, the sentiment resembles a common accusation for women of my era. If you didn't make him angry, he wouldn't hate you. Alarmingly, there is a dedicated anti-private property rights force that insists that I should just remove costly and commercially valuable structures so that they don't have to be bothered as if it has been their time and treasure that has been extended instead of mine. Apparently, for some of my fellow Talon citizens, rights are disposable and banners posted to celebrate national holidays and special event months than to commemorate national tragedies and solemn occasions are too vexing for First Amendment protections. None of these fellow citizens have had the maturity, the decency, or the courage to have a conversation with me. All would be apoplectic if they were subjected to the attacks on their private property like those we have been subjected to, and they would be justified. And I would be absolute, and I would absolutely defend them. Because nothing justifies these hateful actions, nothing justifies bullying, nothing justifies continued attacks on our property. So I'm asking this town council, in this, to condemn in strongest terms this latest malicious and most untalented act. I'm asking that we define and defend a community that stands as a beacon against hateful actions and intimates for the principle of adjusting our disagreements with debate and discussion. A community that defends the right of every citizen to light liberty in the pursuit of happiness under the full throat of protection of our miraculous Bill of Rights is truly the only community worth living in. Thank you.
Is there anyone online who would like to speak? Anyone else in the room? Online? Room? Okay. So, uh, we shall move on to item six, which is a public hearing item. This is the consideration of a resolution appropriating five, five thousand for various school improvements, appropriating one point two million for the purchase of a fire rescue truck, and appropriating four hundred thousand for ADA compliant sidewalk improvements, and authorizing the issuance up to two million, one hundred fifty-five thousand dollars in bonds and notes to finance the appropriations.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, this is, uh, this is the financial end of projects that have already been approved. For different things, the five hundred and fifty through, uh, school improvements, the one point two for the, uh, squad rescue truck, and the up to four hundred thousand beside it already been approved through our capital improvements plan and project and budget. Now, this is a fiscal process, I believe, per charter, that we, the town, have to go through in order to, uh, move into debt. Uh, for this, it's something that we have done, uh, every year, and this is what the public hearing is about to.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the town manager before we open the public hearing?
I just.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
So I just wanna confirm, Brian, that, so this is out of the budget that we voted on in the town, they passed for. This was already, this was all taken into account in that budget, right?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And I have, um, our financial director, Lisa Hancock, here, uh, to assist with any questions.
Just to clarify, we've, uh, already had a public hearing on the capital budget, of which this is part of, right?
Correct.
Okay, and so the capital budget was approved at a referendum as the council brand asked as part of our overall.
Correct, this is the financial arm of that going out to death. My, our bond attorney, uh, wrote up the resolution, um, as he does every year, and this is, um, it's required to be approved by council to go to this.
Sure, thank you. So if there are no further questions, there will be another opportunity to ask questions, but, um, if there's a motion to open the public hearing, we will, uh, hear from the public and then move on to our further deliberations. And if we would like to move this, then I'm saying. Their motion to open the public.
So.
Oh, moved by Councilor Uticek, seconded by Councilor Community. Uh, so the, the public hearing is now open. Uh, before we ask for a public comment, I believe that Councilor Uticek has at least one communication that we would like to put on the record. We did, we received one, we, do you, no, no, just go back to Lisa, so the person I wrote in supports all three items. Great. So per our procedure, we will provide that communication to the clerk to include in our meeting back. Um, so we will now, uh, ask for, uh, public participation to give their input on this. Uh, we will alternate back and forth between the room and soup. Uh, we can start in the room, if somebody would like to speak, we ask you to come up to the table if you're able, and, uh, give us your name and address.
My name is Dr. Shannon Plant, Level one sixty-eight, by the rural town. Good evening. Okay. The most significant task for this town, in this town council, is to provide the safest and healthiest environment possible for citizens. The town council works for all of us. The town must work for the town, not the town manager, the town council chair, not for any state rep. It must not listen to or work for the incessant, incessant self-interest of any one particular person at the exclusion of the rest of us in town. Putting a cement sidewalk on this green grass raises a huge public safety concern for anyone with and without disabilities. So let's look at this here. Number one, trapped. State Road one ninety-five is a busy road without an event on the green. It is more so when there is an event being held. Crossing at the crosswalks is an adventure in itself, and those two healthy lanes. One is grateful and lucky if the vehicle stops when one enters the crosswalk. How easy is it going to be for those with physical challenges? Crossing over one ninety-five is a serious, never-present danger when events are held on the green. Traffic's heavy, fast, and reluctant to stop. One ninety-five traffic poses a significant and very real risk, someone could get hurt, kill. Do what makes sense. Congestion. Or dismount park, safely drop off those with physical challenges and disabilities, certainly not on one ninety-five. Today's the character of this whole apartment vehicles, the traffic headed in both directions. Is this a safe environment to drop off those with disabilities? What else for that matter? Do what makes sense. And must make one mistake into account. The increased vehicle and pedestrian traffic and congestion can lead to a greater distractions and accidents. There seems to be a pickup in accidents and houses being crashed into since the green was reconfigured by the Ferguson State starting around two fifteen, two hundred and sixty. Do what makes sense. Now, let's look at the activity of the green itself during an event. How does one safely put disabilities on a cement sidewalk along vehicles, stationary and those moving off and on the green, procession stands, vendors, tents, many other pedestrians? One does not frequently do so. There is not enough room on this tiny strip of grass that packing people in like sardines does not conducive to promoting the safest and healthiest environment anywhere. Please, do what makes sense. There is a solution that makes sense. A solution that will preserve our historic heritage, heritage and provide a safer and healthy environment for all of us in town. Put the events on a ready paved and flat surface area, and lots of parking, dropping off of folks, and easy access to all vendors and tents. There are plenty of large parking lots in this town, especially those parking lots at the schools and the parking lot at the church at the end of the green. This is a practical solution to the dangers of traffic and congestion and addresses access and safety concern. Look at the big picture. Do what makes sense. Take events off the green. And there is no cost. There's no cost at, at, at all. It, one does not need to pay four hundred thousand dollars on the parking lot we ever, we already have our own. Use that money in support of what we've already had. Repair the sidewalks on this side of the green. Repair the ramp on the jail museum. Repair sidewalks on the other side of the green. Repair the ADA ramp at the jail museum. Use it, use the money for education. Preserve what we have. Use the money to preserve, conserve, and appreciate our place in history, our pictures, our properties, and our built heritage. Use the money to protect our sense of place. And keep the green, green. Thank you. Oh, by the way, those curb cuts, they're ADA accessible. And I gave, gave you the paper that I have, uh, from the architect, the, uh, the engineer who designed those ramps. Every single one of them out there is ADA accessible. Welcome, Paul. Thank you.
Thank you. So online, it looks like we have gotten some iPod.
Hi there, it's Susan Luce at Hughes ninety-five Talon Green, can you hear me?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you, good evening. I am here tonight representing my family as we live on the green with a wheelchair, as well as the Commission on People with Disabilities as Chair. I'm here to speak in strong support for approval of the budget item on your agenda tonight to put the ADA compliant walkway, as well as expand the Veterans Memorial on the green. As you know, this sidewalk project has been a long process, way too long, in my opinion. But I would like to thank the current town council for your support throughout. I'd like to thank the previous town council for their support in voting it forward to begin almost a year ago now. I'd like to thank our town manager for his unwavering support of this and ADA accessibility improvements all over town. And I'd like to thank the countless town departments and staff who have dedicated and continue to dedicate time, effort, and again, support. And finally, I want to thank everyone in town who has come forward and spoken, written letters, and offered their support of this project throughout this process, during which I have been labeled as selfish, uncaring, angry, self-centered, anti-history, and those are just some of the things I know firsthand. But when I get emails from a resident of this community who also lives on the green and also uses a wheelchair, imploring me to please keep fighting against the historical society and the ridiculous lawsuit. Please don't give up. Thank you and God bless you. You can call me whatever you want. That's what makes me certain that this is the right thing to do for this community, our community. Yes, it will be a change to our green, and change is hard. But this is a change that we will look back on and be proud of. Please pass this budget expense request to begin the ADA walkway project as soon as possible. I look forward to that first shovel full and finally seeing our green begin to become accessible for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else in the room who would like to speak?
Good evening, Dennis Negan, six eighty-nine, Thomas Stage Road. So I guess one thing, um, that has been bothering me a little bit is that all the research that I've done in terms of the green is that it is already ADA compliant and compatible. The state made it mandatory when they did the I ninety-five project to make certain that it was, and it is. The sidewalk is just a nice-to-have thing. Obviously, it's gonna facilitate some access on, on the green, just individuals. But quite honestly, it's not something that's required by law, uh, in any way, no way, okay? And my research has also kind of shown me that this, two things. First of all, this sidewalk project was kind of put to bed before Mr. Foley showed up, and that he's the one that resurrected it, so I'd be curious to know why that is. And, um, in addition to that, early this year, Mr. Foley had indicated that most, if not all, of that cost would be by a grant or not incurred by the town taxpayers. Look at the video tapes there. So I guess the shell game that has gone on with this is only part of the act that everyone's been able to witness. But it's absolutely ludicrous that this town, especially certain members of this committee or council, excuse me, town, who boast on being fiscally prudent and we're carving all kinds of money out of the budget for other reasons, think spending four hundred thousand dollars on something that's not essential, um, is the way to go. Uh, it's, it's really ridiculous, it's fraudulent, to be quite honest. So, um, this may only be the financial part of the equation. The reality is, if it doesn't get approved, projects don't go forward, is that simple? Given what's gonna go on potentially financially in this country, the last thing that any town should be doing is incurring any kind of extra debt, because the reality is that debt servicing costs, in all likelihood, regardless of what happens this fall, is, are going to skyrocket. And this town is gonna be incurring more and more costs tied to debt, um, as time goes on. So then, all that does, according to the current town council, is to carve other benefits away from the taxpayers in general, whether from education or otherwise, so that you can pay for the sidewalk down the green, so. Very foolish, incredibly foolish, unnecessary, um, by a long shot, thank you.
Is there anyone online who would like to speak? You can raise yours in hand or press star nine. Anyone else in the room? Anyone else online?
West, Michelle, again. Team Joe Safford, Drive, Talon. And I'm here to urge the council to use the four hundred thousand dollars to improve the sidewalks around the green that we already have. Um, I find that, uh, the new construction is, uh, is, uh, unnecessary. The green is already compliant. And if you use the five, four hundred thousand to make the sidewalks around the green compliant, uh, that would help a lot of residents just living in the green neighborhood. Again, what is required by law, um, doesn't make everyone happy, but that's what's required by law, essentially. And we've seen that the, uh, project manager from the state and federal project in two thousand and fifteen made the green ADA compliant. So I'm asking that the four hundred thousand dollars be used to make the sidewalks we already have ADA compliant and improve them, um, to become ADA compliant. And hopefully some way get them connected to Big Y so that residents, um, in our elderly and disabled housing areas on the green have a way to get to and from services from the Big Y area. Thank you.
I saw a hand go up online and.
It's Kathy Bach.
Kathy Bach?
Maybe mention again?
Yeah. Kathy, we're trying to, uh, ask you to unmute so you can see.
Okay. I thought you were gonna mute me, okay. Thank you for the time this evening. So much has been said already that I'm not gonna try, I'm trying to look through my notes and not be redundant. I think maybe the best thing I can do is perhaps go into story mode. For three hundred years, Talon Green has stood as a unifying place to tell Talon's story. It has been a place for people to, as sociologists and psychologists talk about, it's a place to preserve Talon's story and a place to get a sense of, um, of ourselves. We, we preserve and we allow people to get in, to know what, what, what our essence is, our sense of place. It is so important, and it has been able to be preserved. We have always been able to work through our differences, and this has been such a divisive project. And it started as a together project, and it became divisive, and I'd like to see us come back together. I'd almost like to see us unify around, around the idea of making, making our historic center, our historic center, and preserving what three hundred years worth of people in town have been able to do. Over the last year and a half, two years, I've heard a lot of things said that aren't true about our Talon story, and I won't take time tonight to correct it, maybe I'll just write a little story about it. I've heard that we had cattle on the green, which isn't true, it's too tiny for that. I heard we had a pound on the green, it's not true. We've all brought our wishes and our stories to what we want it to be, and it's not true. History in Talon is just our story, our town story. It's what the society has been able to cobble together from what we have had handed down to us, and is what we will hand down to others. We will create our dream, but we do have one place in town that's just ours, that's the continuum. We can build trails, and we're not gonna pave them. We will build ball fields, and we won't pave them. We have cemeteries, and we won't pave them either. We will have places in town that will be significant to what today is in Talon. But the green is our continuous story that's unchanged, that we will have to put our mark on, but we won't change our story there. We will tell some of our story. And we really need to have a place, a sense of place, where people can come and be themselves, leave their mark, and move on. There are antique sidewalks around the green that need attention, need it badly in some places, and in many places not. Professionals have been there in the last two years, since this argument has begun. They ask me, what's the problem? There are places I know that there is a problem. The church sidewalk up to the church has been repaired by me and a volunteer many times, where we filled in the cracks, and nobody knows it because it's been fixed. We can do the same with the sidewalks around the green. If I hadn't tried it myself, I wouldn't be asking for it. I have never asked for something I haven't been willing to or haven't done myself. I know this can happen, and I know we can do that and preserve our sense of place and still have a place where people of all walks of life, all abilities of life, can still get around and still maintain our sense of place and still have areas in town where we can do things that we'd like to do as a community. As for the idea of moving things off the green that are too big, I think for safety reasons, it's a wise idea. Twenty years ago, a farmer's market of five trucks totally destroyed the area of the green, and we are far bigger than five trucks today. It won't take long till those trees roots will die, and the green will become concave again, and we'll be saying, how did we let that happen? So we may want to rethink some of the projects we do on the green and rethink where we locate them. But we also might want to rethink, why are we causing people like, and I'll name names, but they don't wish me to, because I've asked them permission, but I'll use myself, Kathy Bach, who's having trouble walking on turf these days. It's hard to walk when you get old, when arthritis gets in your knees and your ankles. Grass is hard, but I'm not gonna ask you to pave the green, and I will not be relegated to a four-foot sidewalk. If I want to go to something on the green, I want to go to all of it. And a sidewalk isn't gonna get me there. And a sidewalk isn't going to get me there. It's only going to put me on a piece of ribbon, and I'll be discriminated against. So please, fix the sidewalks that we have. That's a wise use of funds. Put the programs that you want to have, which are fun, in places that all of us can get to and use, and leave our history where it is, that we can all enjoy a sense of place. Thank you for your time tonight. I appreciate your time. Congratulations on getting a budget passed. Good night.
Could you give your name and address for the record, please?
I am so sorry. Kathy Bach, 255 Tallinn Stage Road. In the middle of hay season, which is why I think I'm sunstruck.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak?
Mary Pat Susie, 111 Torrey Road. I'm just talking about 400K expenditure. Last year, I spent probably four plus hours at a planning and zoning meeting where the, where the map, the project was displayed, and they voted on it. They voted no confidence on it and asked for the town manager and the council to come back with two separate, different maps or, you know, mockups or to make it a little more historical and maybe think about different materials. Because the current plan is a concrete sidewalk that may or may not be stamped. I don't even remember what the current plan is. But anyway, I'm just asking the council to sort of think about that. I don't know that planning and zoning, what they're, ever actually approved this. And they had very thoughtful conversations about it, and it wasn't about whether, it wasn't about not saying no sidewalks on the green. It was saying, let's make it appropriate and historic. And that is really, there should be compromise, and we should get all those people back together and make sure that it's not us against them, and it should never have been. Let's get back together and just come up with a better plan. So for now, if the 400,000 is the plan that was put forward that planning and zoning didn't necessarily approve, I would be against that 400,000 expenditure, but I would be for, all for, all parties getting together and just talking about it and making a compromise and coming up with something that's appropriate for our green. Okay? Thank you. Have a good night's night.
Thank you.
Online, we have Jody Coleman-Marziallo.
Thank you. Jody Coleman-Marziallo, 79, Tallinn Green. I just wanted to say I fully agree with what Kathy Bach and Kate Ferris just said. In the very beginning, as Lisa Hancock knows, when we had discussions about the sidewalk with multiple different commissions, including the Persons with Disabilities, the Veterans Recognition Commission, the Planning and Zoning Commission, even the Design Advisory Board had some input. And it was nice when everybody worked together to find something that is historically appropriate for a 300-year-old nationally-registered historic place. And as far as the events go, we have successfully had events in the library parking lot before. We used to have Celebrate Tallinn there. I personally attended and worked a group. We also had events in the back parking lot of the high school, where these are all ADA compliant areas. Everybody has ample parking. Safety is not an issue where they're next to a busy road, and there's facilities. A lot of people need to use the facilities. We have a beautiful park, Crandall, which has a lovely covered picnic area, where if people are buying food at some of the markets and stuff, they have a very nice place to sit, eat in the shade, and look at our beautiful new fountain in Crandall Pond. So I really feel that this $400,000 for the sidewalk could be used more appropriately and to help keep the green historic. I fully support the fire truck, and I fully support the Board of Education property improvement. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak?
Andy, 689 Tallinn Stage Road. I'm actually here to read an email from Claudette Morehouse, who was unable to send her email and asked if somebody would read it. Dear Town Council, thank you. I'm concerned that after four budget referents, we're struggling, families are still struggling, and that people still don't have portable water with no solution in sight, but 400K for a sidewalk that will not solve the issue of event accessibility, where there are plenty of town-owned properties that are all paved and ADA compliant already. These won't be considered in a aqua. Events on the green are dangerous. Parking is bad, where other venues such as parking lots or libraries, schools, and parks are much more safe and accessible. So this is just posturing stubbornness or just not willing to compromise. We need solutions to contaminated wells, and there's upkeep needed at our historic buildings, such as the jail museum, which is, why is the town letting them go to ruin? 400K can certainly be helpful. Claudette Morehouse, 85 Merlow Way.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online who would like to speak? Annie Nelson?
Yes, good evening. My name is Loriann Nelson. I'm at 206 Anderson Road. And first of all, I'm terribly late to the meeting, and I apologize, so I did miss quite a few of the people talking. But I'm hoping a lot of them said the things I'm going to say. First of all, I completely support everything Kathy Bach has been saying as far as saving and preserving our green. Kathy herself has been such a vital part of this town in maintaining our history. And it's, it's very bothersome for someone like Nathan's family bought a very historic house here in Tallinn, excuse me, in 1964. And there were probably 4,000 people in the town when I grew up here. And now I've moved back permanently after 30 years being gone, and I'm seeing things that really disturb me. And I don't really understand the purpose in tearing up something historic when in California, I would tell people, we have a green, and they have no idea what you're talking about. People in California have no idea. And when I've had friends come out through the years, they go, wow, this is a super quaint, cool town. And there's not 5,000 people here anymore. There's what, 15,000 if I'm correct, something like that. And the events, they're wonderful events, but like others have probably said, there are so many other areas that would be ADA compliant for people who have difficulty walking or moving in any way. So I, and I see the 400,000, and there's so many other places where that money could go, like Kathy said, in preserving the green. And there's one thing that's really bothered me on social media is seeing the shaming of people who don't support tearing up the green and permanently ruining something that has been there since, what, 1715, something like that? That, why are we shamed? I have nothing against anyone who is having trouble walking across anything. But there are alternate places that are ADA compliant 100%. But if you have a sidewalk, how are they going to get to the vendor across the grass unless you pave the entire green? So I mean, I feel like there is some kind of an agenda that it's starting on the green, and it's just, its purpose is to turn this town into Vernon. Tell me where Vernon's Green is. I couldn't tell you. I have no idea. But I will do everything I can, just because I know, we knew Lyle Thorpe, my dad, we all loved this town. And I just won't stand back and just watch people just tear it up for the sake of tearing it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak?
I'm Merrily Beebe, 90th Road. I was planning on speaking, and I can't believe we're still doing this background. And this is disappointing because a lot of you know my family, a lot of you knew my father-in-law, who was in a wheelchair for 40 years, and who was tax collector for a big part of his life here, and who had to be bodily carried over thresholds and other non-ADA compliant places because that didn't exist then. So he was in a motorized wheelchair. This place was actually the, or the art center is where he worked. And a lot of what we're talking about now is directly affecting people like him and his ability to fully participate in just occupying the same spaces in our community that the rest of us occupy. And if it means that we have one small walkway added to our green over, and if you look at the aerial photos, which I offered to give to the town, there's been a sea of continuous change in this area. It shows way back the turn of the century that there were water lines and fire hydrants sticking up out of it because the people that owned the houses on the green probably didn't want their houses to burn down. Somebody had dug it all up at that point. And the, the idea that we are worried about $400,000 right now is really, I feel duplicitous because the people that sued the town are the ones that caused us not to be able to use the ARPA funding grant for this project. So now, we can't, we have to use taxpayer dollars because the ability to use the grant monies passed us by because we were engaged in a lawsuit. And as the former, as a member of Planning and Zoning Commission now, and as a former chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission, I know that whenever somebody sues the town, it costs the town tens of thousands of dollars every time you go to court. So that's more money that's drawn out of our pocket for a specific agenda. And, you know, it is what it is. But the idea that now people are against $400,000 of expenditure, that was caused by the lawsuit being, that prevented us from using the grant monies that we had set aside, where we would not have to do this with taxpayer money. That was caused by the very people that are complaining about it, and they know that. So for me, this is very personal. I have family members that are disabled. I spent years helping a father-in-law who lived his entire life trying to be a full member of society, with a mother-in-law who was primary caregiver, who spent all of her time working around how she could get in around. So to me, this is a small thing, and I think it's something we definitely need to do for those of us in our community that are not able to. It's part of our history. These people are part of our history, and they were part of our history before because they were relegated to back rooms. So the veterans that came home from civil war could walk their wheelchairs. They didn't have full access. They couldn't be out. They were relegated to back rooms. Let's not do that anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online who would like to speak? Anyone else in the room?
Hi, George, Fish Game Road. I have no problem with the sidewalk on the green because it's good here. It's already been built. It's taken many years to get here. I'd like to point out, one thing is, correct if I'm wrong, but my understanding is, everybody keeps saying fix the existing sidewalks. My understanding that it's all private property, and the town is not able to fix other people's sidewalks. We cannot be putting the money into people's sidewalks. They want to fix the sidewalks, it would probably take an eye attack of Congress to fix those sidewalks. But the town cannot fix those sidewalks. So that's kind of like a moot point. If they want to move some of these events, bigger ones, to school parking lots or wherever they want, I have no problem with that. But I think it'd be a nice idea, and I think that we need maybe some more sidewalks to go the full, full length of the green. And like I say, at least up to the highway. If it's up to me, it would go much further. But I like to commercialize all of 195. I have no problem with that. People need to realize, and you can correct me from all above these, we cannot fix those sidewalks. They're not the town's sidewalk. They're not the town's property. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Is there anyone else online who would like to speak? Anyone else in the room?
Chairman Plankton, 681 though, voting tall. You know, Miss Bebe is correct. No one should be delegated to a bathroom. No one should be marginalized. And those people who do not want the sidewalk on the green do care deeply about those with ADH lungened. Everyone here knows somebody or is themselves, has limitations in some way. We care of those people, the historical society, genealogical society, red and white. We all do care about people's disabilities. The green is ADA compliant, which I said in my notes. Those curb cuts are ADA compliant. I spoke to, wrote to, talked to the engineer who designed that a long time ago.
Dr. Plankton, I know that you're up for a second time. If you could just keep it to new content, please.
Well, I just wanted to say that the folks can get on the green. They can, wheelchairs or, or, buses or whatever. They have ample access to the green. But to make things easier for them, safer and healthier, they should, perhaps, we should move all the activities off the grid.
Thank you. It looks like we have a couple of hands up for a second time, and we will go through a second time. I just want to make sure. Anyone who hasn't spoken yet who would like to, I'd like to give you the opportunity first. Is there anyone who hasn't spoken yet? We will, we will hear from people a second time. I would just ask that you keep it to new content to not repeat what you previously said. So I think first, Loriann Nelson?
Yes, thank you. Loriann Nelson, 206 Anderson Road here in Tallinn. And I believe this is new from what I did not say, but after hearing Merrily Beebe speak, we do care about people, anybody. We all have someone in our lives who has some sort of disability. Putting a strip of concrete down the green is still not going to allow them full access to the grassy areas. So it isn't a personal attack on someone who's in a wheelchair. And you know what I would really like to see is those people in these meetings, the people that are being, feel like they're being discriminated against in some way at these meetings. Because we're, we're speaking for people as though they don't have, they don't have a voice, and of course they do. So that's, I think that's, I just, I always feel like we're being shamed into saying, oh, we don't want to tear up the green because we don't like people in wheelchairs. I'm just, I'm serious. That's the most ridiculous thing, and it goes on through our society. We don't like something is because we don't like the person, and that is so untrue. And if people would get to know each person that has something to say, they'd realize we're all on the same page. But it's just not practical to tear up the green when there's a vendor right over here that the person still can't get to. And so I'm, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the room?
Very, 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 very pretty. Dennis Key, 689 Tallinn Stage Road. So just for point of clarification, I'm sure everyone up here may know this. Obviously, some of the individuals in the audience, none, intrinsically not. Basically, the private homeowners around the green, on average, own about five feet from their front door if they're lucky. And the rest is owned by the state or the town. So it's not private property. Sidewalks are not on private property. I don't know about the whole green, but I know I researched part of it, when in fact, they did the survey work, I guess, because of the project, the I-95 project. For instance, the houses that are on Tallinn Green Road, I guess, is it goes up St. Matthews. Basically, a number of those houses' land only extends beyond their front porch. And the rest, 20, 30, 40 feet down to the road, including the sidewalk, is not there. So they're not asking to have someone repair their sidewalks. There are states here where owners do own their sidewalks, but that's not the case around the town in green.
Thank you. Kathy Bach?
Thank you. I just wanted to add one more thing to Dennis, and I am very grateful for what Ann Nelson said because I'm, I'm feeling that there's a lot of shaming, and that's really unfortunate since I, except for one person, I've spoken to all the people. In fact, we In fact, we have programs with some of the people from Old Post Village. So I'm very familiar with what they do and do not want to do on the sidewalks. Those who are in wheelchairs and walkers and canes, they do come to the museum often since we're neighbors. But the point on the sidewalks, there are a few people whose property does, do extend under the sidewalk. But the town of Tallinn, the point I really want to make, the town of Tallinn has maintained the sidewalks and in the past has done work on the sidewalks. So have the property owners. But the sidewalks have been raised and leveled in my time in Tallinn, my forty-seven years here. So a one-sixth of the time that the sidewalks have been on the ground, I've seen them worked on by the guys in DPW. It's not a hard job if you want to do the whole job and raise and level in the areas that they need to be done. But in walking them, it's not necessary. Pulling the grass out of them or trimming the edges or just putting down the epoxy granules is really what's necessary where the wheelchair wheel got stuck. And they, this is not new construction, and those rules for ADA are different than existing antique buildings and antique structures. So we're dealing with two different sets of rules. We can work on these sidewalks, and there are different rules, and we can fix them. And the town can do this if they're of a mind because they had, they have done it in the past. And that was the point I wanted to make. And they, they, and other towns do it too, where they cross private property, where the areas are private. You can take care of the town sidewalk crossing a private property. My son's property in Hebron is an example of that, where the town constructed a sidewalk across his private property. So you do maintain, and they, they maintain it. So there are, there's precedent and there's examples of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
John Laughlin, 168 Mountain Spring Road. Normally, I don't insert myself in other issues in the town. I'm concerned, focused, and entirely on my one property and my one issue that the town has done, you know, bestowed upon me. I will mention this because I've attended nearly every town council for the past year. I'm confused as to why this is even a discussion to a degree with the public comment because this was voted on by the previous town council. It was passed. The money was set aside via ARPA, which was then delayed by the lawsuit. But that means, and for that, to my knowledge, the ARPA funds were set aside to another project. Therefore, alleviate and use taxpayer money for this money, for this project. And then on top of this, to the chair's comment, it was agreed upon not only in the town capital budget, but also in the referendum. So if for some odd reason the town council were to go back and change the will of the previous town council and re-go through this, it would just be maddening. And, and for me, it, on the personal level, and I'm dealing with my property and how long it takes to go back and change things after a decision was made, it would be mad. So right, wrong, or indifferent, though, it's already been agreed upon, this block should be coming in, and I don't understand why this discussion is even happening. Thank you.
Is there any other comment? Anybody online? Anyone in the room? All right, seeing no further comment, is there a motion to close the vote here?
So.
Move by Councilor Harvey, second by Councilor Moran. Is, we're all here. Any discussion, no closing vote here? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That is, you know, so at this point, the public hearing is closed. I will now open it up to council questions, and if we so choose, we.
So I just want to ask a question to the town manager, and then perhaps, Councilor, you can check his, chair of the ARPA subcommittee. It came up a couple of times during public comment. Just want to confirm my understanding is that originally, four hundred thousand dollars of ARPA money was set aside for the sidewalks, but that time limited restriction on when that money has to be used by. So is it correct that we then took approximately four hundred thousand dollars worth of items from the capital budget that otherwise would have been debt, used the ARPA money to pay for that, to sort of like offset now having to use town funds or, you know, or the side.
I can handle it. So that is that, we had intended on using the American Rescue Plan Act fund in four hundred dollars. By the way, the four hundred thousand is, is with contingency, and it was likely with stamped concrete on a, on a previous plan. I expect it to be less than that, what's all said and done. I just don't know how much, and also the veteran memorials are that four hundred K as well. So it's not just for the sidewalk. Four hundred K also supports a significant amount of veterans report due to the lawsuit. And looking at the timeline, so ARPA funding needed to be spent by December 31st, 2024, is that correct?
It's be committed in contract.
Committed, yes. We did move about four hundred thousand essentially out of, you know, the capital budget, and it was partly one point two million for the parks garage. We moved all of that over to ARPA and brought the sidewalks over into the, the capital budget. Correct? That was approved and voted on by the town in the last, the last referendum. Well, all of this is, is a part of that. And I'm sorry if it was, you know, this was seen as something other than just a disarm of moving forward with debt. That's all I have. Thanks.
So just one clarified question. So the town is not taking on any more debt than we sort of have already budgeted for in our capital. Absolutely.
Mari?
Yeah. Oh, did I?
No, no, you're fair.
Right, just like, I think I've never had an opportunity to really talk substantially about this. Number one, glad everybody seems to have the school improvements, the fire truck. But those, those are good items. As far as sidewalk goes, just accessibility is very important, obviously. What's beyond that? Also, the fact that the town green is a, is a capital place, you know? And I think over the past few years, we've seen it utilized more to that extent. Farmers markets become bigger and popular and more well-intended. We have harvest, that's now on the green as well. And I think that's really important to town like Tallinn, which is sprawled and spread out. Don't have a very good community place. The green is that place for tall. And moreover, you know, we need to make it accessible for those to continue to be successful. We already have or utilize a temporary sidewalk, which is not completely adequate. Causes damage to the green itself, we talked about in previous council meetings. This, the sidewalk that we're proposing really allows us to kind of. Space. So I see it, see it as a really good investment for this town. As Brian has already mentioned, this was already in the budget that passed through the ARPA committee. We had looked to find it through grants. Our force to go down this route because pending litigation. But I really do feel it's the right direction to take things. And I think, you know, ten years down the road, we'll be looking back, and this was really good.
Thank you.
Yep.
Councilor, you can check?
I'm sure. Oh, are you talking about one at a time?
No, wait, you can make comments here today.
So, so start out with the accessibility of the, you know, because I know that's why most of the people are here. And Katie and I worked on that last council, and then two years before that, it was been going on for a while. Even though people are not here in wheelchairs or whatever reason they can't be, you still represent those. Here or not, you still got to consider everybody, and it's not just people in. Bombs, strollers, or anybody just wants to use it, not just for somebody. So I think it's really important to remember that, especially as councilors want. I know it does cause a lot of division in this town, seems like a lot of things in town do, but this should actually bring us together. I remember one person at one of the meetings last year, okay, you remember, he actually said that you might create a history too. I know, I think you were here then too, as we, you know, sit in. But it's still a stuck. Takes a long time for history to really come around to hear when people say that. My history, I'm not sure. So I just think it's really important to work really hard, like Brian said, very clearly, that money was going to be used from ARPA. And because of pending litigation, that actually has cost the town more money because of it. This is where we're at. So I'm sorry if it causes division, but I agree. This is the right thing for our community to do, and we're going on now, getting it in five years at least. Or more than that. Going to one at a time, that's fine, because I'm absolutely much. They don't, but. Yeah, that's all I have to say about, you know, I fully support.
So I was wondering, Chair, if you could help maybe formulate thoughts better than I could for Mr. Laughlin, and still process-wise, why we're here this evening.
Sure.
That'd be a good answer for that.
Yeah, absolutely. So if I under, because the issuance of debt that we are considering of two million, one hundred fifty-five thousand dollars is in ex, in excess of a certain threshold, we are, we are not required to go to referendum because we're under the referendum threshold, but we are over the determination that we can spend the money without having a public hearing. Yeah?
I'll clarify.
Sure, thanks.
Any issuance of debt?
Oh, okay.
Must have a bonding resolution that goes along with it. So there's a certain issuance of debt, three percent of the, the grand levy that allow you not to have to go to a full referendum to vote on that. Anything over and beyond that amount, go to a full referendum. So this is the, the next piece after the budget was approved that puts, that allows you to now say, okay, we're going to issue debt, that's what was in the plan. And, and if this is the piece that allows you to.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So we are, so we borrowing money, we need to have a public hearing. Every, anyone in town is allowed to come in, give their input. We listen to it, we then deliberate, and we will vote on the next.
Thank you. So one of the. Stop lots more so than I thought. You know, I think as a council, we certainly have, have had our bumps on things we don't agree with, but ultimately come together for the better of the town. One of the comments I just wanted to address really quickly by Mrs. Nelson, I believe. You know, I was thinking about it, you know, kind of her asking disabled folks to come to the meetings. You know, and I thank God every day that I can walk and that I'm able-bodied. But I think in that moment, I put myself in a disabled person's frame of life. So the, some of the folks that are asking for this and a proponent for this sidewalk do live, you know, a stone's throw away from, from the council chambers here. And they're mainly of adult age. So unless mom and dad are bringing them here, this is my negligence too, I'm not disabled. So I, I wouldn't even know how to get into this building if I was in a wheelchair. I know that it could be done. And I'm sure there are safer drop-off areas if you were to have the opportunity and the blessing to have a, a vehicle that can drop a wheelchair off and then maneuver your way up into the building. But as far as coming to this building in a wheelchair from either east or west of the green, I think would be a challenge. I don't think there's anybody here, I may be speaking out, but I don't, there's anybody at the council here that doesn't want to see the green be a more inclusive area with a sidewalk. There's a dichotomy, I'm, I try to be as fair as I can and lead this way through the majority of what I do here personally, but there is a dichotomy here. I'm not somebody that can have one ear on the dichotomy stronger than the others. I have to play both sides evenly. Folks coming in and saying that other sections of the green are difficult to traverse in a wheelchair, I think is true. I don't know, I don't do that every day, or haven't attempted to do that in a wheelchair. Obviously, folks that were here for the issue with Mrs. Marziallo and Mrs. Spock have heard me banter on that I'm a purveyor of history, that I think certain things should be left untouched by modern things. And I'm not going to not publicly come out and say that. But I do think that with the veterans memorial in mind and what we're all trying to do here to make access easier, that I, I really do think that this is a great thing that we're doing for the community. And I think that having both the historic district in mind and I would say the majority of town has the other opinion or voice, think that we could come to a agreement for something that's good. Somebody just negative comments, people coming up here singing angry. I know that it's a, a big topic, but I think that at the end of the day, this is something that can be good. And we can all be happy about when it's resolved, so.
Thank you. Lisa, I did just want to point out that Councilor Butler came on at eight o'clock. I know. Did you want to say something, Councilor Butler, before we go to people for a second time?
No, no, I apologize for being late, but no, I appreciate it. Thank you, Katie.
Of course.
Yeah, I just want to quickly say that I'm pleased to have to agree with everyone who's spoken on the council so far. And I want to mention something that Councilor Guticke had talked about. I wasn't on the council at the time, but I was here at the, one of the prior meetings and prior council. And I believe he was a veteran even, but he was in a wheelchair, and he did talk about how, you know, we're making history now. And especially important, I think, given that part of what we're doing, which is critically important, is we're, we're, we're expanding on the veterans more. And I think they, you know, to the extent that there, you know, there are veterans that are disabled, they should be able to access it. I don't know how we could say we've created this beautiful memorial that you can't access or you can't access the green that's adjacent to it. I also, like Councilor Newman, love the historic aspect of town. And I think certainly we have to balance those things. But as the gentleman mentioned, you know, a year ago at that meeting, we're, I think, we're living history too, and, you know, any effort to try to make people feel more included in this council. Mari mentioned, you know, be able to participate in the town in one of our key areas that we sort of congregate communally, I think is, is a good thing. So I agree with everything you all mentioned.
Councilor, did you have other items you wanted to discuss?
Oh, I just had a couple clarifying things with the squad. I want to do one at a time, multiple people here, so. I know one of the emails we did get was just questions about, can you, yes, first of all, does this squad truck have to go up the bed for whatever reason?
Say that again?
Does this squad truck have to go up the bed for whatever?
To be determined. Fire chief has to explain that it should not, but to be determined. Yep, we have not made a decision on it. My, my inclination is to go out to bed, he does good. He had a decision ship.
Just wondering how many people actually might make them.
It's a squad.
Squad.
And we have one done already.
Right.
So it's, it's very particular. They have the expertise in this.
Yeah.
And they've been moving physically, brutally with their fleet the last two years, so I thank them.
And then I guess my second question is, what would be approximately the time to be on a squad truck?
Gee, was two years or something like that. Cheyenne White Tell is online. John, if you want, if you're there, you want to talk about how long the lead time is on that? But we discussed this today. Two years was the, optimistically, two years. So we kind of want to lock in on price. Everything just gone up the two years I've been here, so.
Right, I guess that's our question. So, once we sign, or we need to sign, that's no other cost that might come along.
I'm playing vehemently against him. You know that.
And John, obviously always does a good job and is very responsible for this department, which I'm sure we all say we had. So I am very excited that the squad truck is happening. I know we talked about it a year or two ago. It's here. I'm excited. Um, and I can't wait to see sister or brother of the one that we have in the department now. So that's all I have.
Brian, did you want to speak on that?
Yeah, just the lead time, John, I'm, I'm.
So seven, seven hundred to seven hundred and fifty days. And we did already go out to bid, not once, but twice. And we only had one bid from the last bidder.
Thanks, John.
Yep.
That's very specific here. I'm going to.
Seven fifty one.
Um, if the decision is made not to act a bid, does, that needs to be approved by the council, right? Okay, thank you. Uh, how is the squad truck replacing one piece of equipment or is it replacing more?
The goal is to get down to four engine tankers. Squad truck is kind of a beefed up, more versatile, um, engine tanker. Uh, I'm, I am comfortable, you know, I am about apparatus getting down to four. Currently, we are, I think, five right now. Uh, when this comes around, we will dump off whatever we have. Some are very old too. So that's why we're, we're kind of at five, as you know, there's one coming on offline block right now. Um, then we'll be down to four once this is, uh, delivered to us. Unless the consultant report tells us otherwise, uh, we should be at five, which is a possibility. Uh, we'll have it. That's another reason why we'll kind of lock it in, uh, and stay in there.
And how long has, oh, all this piece of equipment is going to come offline?
Ninety-four.
I'm sorry?
Ninety-four.
It's been online since nineteen ninety?
Yes.
So, okay. Sure.
We're doing pretty good.
Sorry, sorry about that. Twenty-nine years. Thank you. Um, yeah, I, uh, for me, the policy decision regarding the sidewalks, uh, has been made multiple times. Um, and so this resolution before us is the, not the last, um, but certainly, uh, an important step in moving forward on a policy, policy decision that's already been made. So. Is there any more comments? Like make any questions?
I think the last one, he was probably, I mean, was safety of schools, right? Yeah, I think that's really great. Uh, we've needed that for a long time. So just, I'm just kidding. That's additionally just as important. The protection of our children in schools and that's what we're doing as well.
Yeah, keep the brief. Um, I just want to thank, uh, the Senate Finance Department for all the work they've done in repairing these cap. You know, or, but I look, uh, for me, like the resolution, you know, I see three major, you know, non-recurring expenses. Uh, that all makes sense, you know, I think. Colleen and Brian did a good job explaining fire truck, uh, school improvements, we talked sidewalk. Um, and I also want to, said Finance Department, that's his counsel for supporting a plan to do some more pay you go. This is a. Yeah, sorry.
Um, I agree with Council Gudichuk, um, about the morning. So I'm about to say the year's will some very, you know, hopefully we're moving forward. That, that's a great thing. I did have one other question that I neglected to ask, um, about the sidewalk. Um, Brian, I understand that, so the sidewalk is still litigation, so what's the plan moving forward and, and does that have the impact on the money that we're, uh, creating tonight at the top?
Litigation has a cost to the town, but no impact on this. The impact would be that prices go up for concrete labor and that, that sort of thing. Um, then that, that would have an impact on it. The plan for the sidewalk is, you know, originally the plan was to go right down the middle of the sidewalk and then, um, develop right into the, uh, Veterans Memorial. I did not want to design either of those two things. Veterans Memorial, uh, a, a, a sketch and plan has been submitted to my office from the vets. Uh, due to litigation, we have that whole. As far as the sidewalk, the plan that we're moving forward with is not the plan we had. It's the plan submitted by Jody Coleman Marzialo. President of the Historic District Commission and agreed upon by Kathy Bach. They met in my office, several days later, they met with an engineer and they, those two walked the green and helped design our plan. And they agreed that that's how we're going to do it moving forward. Now spent about seven thousand dollars, uh, engineering their plan. Uh, again, not the one that I had originally, so. Uh, and then, of course, there was a change of course on their behalf and, and, uh, litigation has, uh, unfortunately ensued, but we're, we are steadfastly moving forward through the litigation, uh, with some, uh, successes, uh, thus far. But fingers crossed, we'll move forward with a plan submitted by the HDC. We have not, and in, in good faith, we did not go back and go to our, our, our original plan down the middle. We are staying with the plan submitted by, uh, Jody Carmen Coleman Marziano, is the president of the Historic District Commission, with the email I showed all of you, uh, last year that she signed with those ones. Thank you.
Yeah, questions?
I, I didn't, just because I, I don't know the answer. How much discussion has, like, um, the, uh, material that we would use or use years' worth? Years' worth. And if I could add, as far as sidewalks that go down the, um, one ninety-five in front of people's houses, uh, the existing stone sidewalks, uh, we can pave those in gold. It would not, it would not improve access to the green. One iota. None of those sidewalks are on the green, uh, where we want to increase accessibility. So years and years of discussion on materials, uh, again, we went with their, their plan. They submitted a plan to concrete. Had an engineer. They, they walked with their engineer. I didn't. I didn't want any part. You guys decide. We want to move it around trees. It was a great plan. Uh, so that, that's where we settled and we're going to move forward. I certainly could, you know, go back and let's do it right down the middle. I don't. I think what they submitted was fair. And that's where I go with it. And just for my edification, maybe some folks that, that aren't aware of the past years, what were some of those materials that were discussed? In your, to your knowledge, from, or different differences and.
You name it anywhere from grass, nothing, uh, to regular concrete. Stone, stamped concrete, uh,
paving stones.
paving, you name it, uh, brick, cobblestone, uh, it, everything's been discussed.
And as Brian said, taking up all of that has been, uh, discussed in multiple, uh,
Yeah.
Years and years, uh, to the point when I got here, the council was very specific when they hired me, make a decision, let's get this off our plate.
Yeah.
And they were, you know, unanimous in wanting to make the green accessible.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Yes.
So before us, we have a resolution, um, as our finance director said, this has been developed, uh, by our bond attorney. And is there a motion to approve the resolution in item six point one as described? Also made by Council Gudichuk? Is there any further discussion about the motion? Okay, do you need us to do anything differently than just a roll call vote? No?
We'll just have to roll call.
Yep, sure, absolutely. So, um, we will do a roll call vote on this. We'll start, uh, Councilor Butler.
Hi.
Councilor Gudichuk, uh, Council Mari, Council Gudichuk, hi.
Hi.
I'm also in. Thank you very much. That resolution does. We will now move on to item seven A, which is reports of boards and committees responsible to the council. I will, uh, Lisa is, is in the room, so I get to ask her in person tonight. Yes. Um, wondering if we have received funds for our, for Bertrum yet?
Oh, yes, we have. Yes, we have. Um, it's also in my manager's report. The town manager, I did put the dollar mod, a little over two million dollars. Um, it, it came pretty close to where we thought we would. There were some ineligible amounts, but, um, now we are pretty much have now have collected all those funds with the, uh, thank you to our legislators, our council members, our staff who worked very hard with the state of Connecticut to, um, work on special legislation to allow for some of the problems that were caused, um, to get, get the funding.
So the.
So it's here.
You are satisfied that the town has been made whole as, as expected for this project?
For the most part, it's about twenty thousand dollars difference.
Twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Got it.
It's, it's.
Okay.
Not worth the fight at this point.
Okay. Um, Mr. Foley, I would like to ask for a future agenda item to dissolve the Bertrum Building Committee?
Whether you're stealing my thunder, the town.
Sorry.
That certainly isn't our coming attraction, uh, to have that on a council agenda. I talked to the open source also here. Don't necessarily need it, but considering all the things, let's absolutely do it, uh, solve it.
Yeah, let's dissolve it the proper way, if you don't mind. No, not sad about it at all. So we can, we can officially close the Bertrum Building Committee. That would make me very happy. Also, it makes me happy to see kids in that building using it all the time. So, um, so that's Bertrum. Um, Firehouse?
Goodbye.
Yeah.
We haven't met, um, I know a grant manager. Heard, we contacted her in the engineer regarding, um, Dan, so, so we're waiting on that at the next meeting. So other than that, um, oh, I've gotten very close to finishing it out, so stay tuned. Just again, appreciative. I'm sure Jacob isn't, is too, um, Megan Masse, she's been great and she's probably done more than she thought she would go into, um, with this project. So I just wanted to acknowledge her again for her. Katie on that, and then you want to jump right up? We'll be, we will have a meeting this month, um, to go over whatever we have available and what potentially we'll have and conversations of maybe potential capital items, whatever it is, I'm not sure, soon. So it'll be nice to see everybody at that. Brian hasn't been working though.
Barbara, um, Park, uh, Parks Garage, might have a meeting, uh, next week with our engineer, our D W director, uh, that, that was a hiccup. One of the person, an architect, uh, I believe is in hospice.
Oh, no.
Correct. Um, so we're going to have an emergency meeting, but certainly, uh, let's some options, uh, type of meeting. I believe most of the architecture has been done. Uh, but again, we'll have a meeting. I don't anticipate any problems, but paint factories blow up on us, so, you know.
Okay.
Let's see.
All right. Thank you, Brian.
Okay. Um, reports, are there any questions on the KDA? So we'll go to reports of the council liaisons. Do you want to start?
No meetings.
Excellent. Yeah, all right. Council Gudichuk?
Sure, we had a meeting last night. The Recreation Advice Board did, um, lots of stuff, great stuff going on there. Been community active, um, campus going well, um, the new, I say, year reading. This is going, so this is really great to keep it clean for the kids. Uh, he gave an update. I think he's going to reach out to Lisa for clarification. Uh, let's see, has a balance of a hundred and thirty-nine thousand five hundred and sixty dollars. He has questions on if he can hold it next year. I think he can, because as long as it's permitted. So he's going to reach out to you. Bruce, Bruce Watt.
Yeah. Reach out to me. I, I really need to check into that. As long as we have a, a contract, likes for users.
Yeah, that, that's what it was. And I went back during the last week to look at, uh, how we voted on it. Just was sort of, but yeah, he's definitely gonna reach out to you. Um, failed renovation schedule we went over and then we some, you can find it on there again, maybe?
You are, and that was a big one too.
All right, I'll stop there. We'll leave it at there. So then the big thing was the Celebrate Talon. We talked about it. Uh, that board was actually really disappointed to hear that it's going to be separated this year. They didn't think it was a wise choice to tax taxpayers' money. They liked the idea of keeping it separated. But the big reasons of parking, um, I'm sure Brian's going to be creative. Parking, um, you know, it's going to be something like a lot of room, you know, we have a lot of parking space and with ADA and everything, um, I'll tell you, right? Yes, that was the other thing. I said I would share it with the council and that I had my own concerns at that part. So I think we have a better plan and we can give it to that board. They probably will stand there. Great idea to have it. So, uh, that's really it.
You have a question?
Well, I, let me piggyback while we're in the neighborhood. Um, that was a tough decision to make, to cut something. Uh, and I'll own that. It's like, I've been wanting to put it in, in, uh, the budget and asked to cut, cut and cut as many where we can. The fact of the matter is, um, it was a lot of staff work and a lot of fundraising by our staff, which is not overly fond of doing, uh, to begin with. Um, I think Celebrate Talon was great. We're going to try to, uh, embrace some of the good things that were there, uh, and combine them, uh, with the Harvest Fest moving forward, taking into part, you know, all the, everything that we can to move with the, the bottom line to Celebrate Talon was not overly attended. And, um, difficult accessibility was a major problem for that spot. So, um, I'll take credit for, you know, if they want, I'll take blame for the decision. We had to cut, so you can tell them, I'll, I'll, I'm going to meet in, I'll do a filter.
Yeah, that's up to you.
I met with Bruce today.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
It's still, but yeah, I mean, I said I would bring it and they were happy. They're, I spread it here and uh, I think I have some suggestions to just start with.
All right.
But anyways, yeah.
Can't wait.
Please, but that, but that's all I have, Katie.
Thank you, Councilor Warren.
Yeah, uh, I attended the planning and zoning commission meeting last night. Um, the big takeaway is that, um, they, um, put a lot of work from David, put together a pretty comprehensive inventory of town owned property. Um, and, uh, I believe they're going to be showing that with councils. Well, I, I have a copy of it. Um, I think there are some opportunities there, um, to perhaps, you know, sell very small parcels that are, you know, adjacent to residential properties and it's like point one acres or whatever. Place, places to generate some income for the town, uh, for a property that's just sort of sitting there. So we, I think it was a great thing that the planning and zoning commission put together. I think it will really help us work to what the town actually, as far as property goes. Obviously, we're not talking about like concentration shares, those types of things, but, um, I, I think it's fantastic. And, um, I think any way that we can sort of generate income rather than just sitting on our books, good thing. So, um, that was, that was the big thing for last night.
Thank you. Jordan? Councilor Butler?
So I've had no meetings. The only thing I will say is that, uh, Permanent Celebration Committee has a number of openings right now. Um, so we're really looking to fill those, um, positions. Um, especially because we have some upcoming fall events that they typically run. Um, it's a really good way to get involved, um, in something that's very low key and it's fun to do. Um, so anyone who's hesitant, it's, um, from what I've seen, a lot of fun and, and very enjoyable. If you want to kind of just get, um, your foot in the door and do something for the town. Um, so if anyone is, is willing to, um, sign up, uh, or has any questions, they can feel free to reach out to anyone on the town council. But we do have a number of positions on that committee. but we do have a number of positions on that committee.
Thank you. I apologize, I forgot in 7A to mention Rhodes Health Passports. I'll block it in here. The Rhodes Health Passports will be meeting next week, which we have a meeting on the book next week to follow up on some issues that have come. The Historic District Commission, Matt, on June 26th, they did elect new officers, although Ms. Sashel was not there and sent an email that she is not able to serve as chair, so I think they're gonna consider officers again at their next meeting. They did approve two COAs, one for windows and a porch, and another. The Health District meets, I think it's next week in person. Are you going to that, Brian?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I cannot go.
It overlaps with the, yeah, getting into my town manager's report, the commission meeting.
Oh.
But I got an hour up front with the health, and then I can separate to the local commission.
Okay, excellent. Yeah, I can't make it to the health meeting. I have a work conflict up there. And the CROG Executive Board is on summer break, so they don't meet again until. All right, we can now move on to 8.1, which is new business. The first item, 8.1, is the financial update for the last quarter of fiscal year 2020.
Thanks, and this is, this is something that you, Jared, I believe, suggested we do this year. Quarterly report from our financial director of the finance department. With me, I have our director, Lisa Hancock, and she's here. There's some documents for all of us to review, but go ahead, Lisa.
Okay, good evening. Before I begin, I just want to caveat that, this, that these numbers are nowhere near final. They are changing daily, but this was a snapshot out of July 1st with the data that I had available at that time and estimates that I could best guesstimate at that point. So we may do better or we may do worse, but we're not gonna be in a bad situation as far as you're right. So I just want to start out with that comment, that these are not final numbers. Lisa, just, I've got to interrupt you. When do the final numbers come out? Hopefully by the end of September, because there's a lot of adjusting entries that have to happen.
Yeah.
So we're hoping the end of September, after we get all the final tax collections, that there's special rules that govern that. But a lot of it should be in, you know, end of August, beginning of September, there should be a lot of that. Hopefully finishing up all the payables by the end of July, so we'll have a good picture. August, September.
And you'll give us an official, like, year interview like you normally do?
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you so much.
And then, and then when the audit is complete, you'll have the absolute final.
Thank you.
Okay, so at this point in time, my estimates are that revenue will exceed the budget by about $892,000. It's actually better than that if you take into account fund balance and not using fund balance for what we planned on using it. To begin with, the, the first area is in property taxes. If you look at our current levy, the property taxes are about $262,000 is my estimate right now, where I think in overall, that is for property taxes, interest, delinquent taxes, everything to do with property taxes work. I'm anticipating it to exceed the budget by about $262,000. Part of that is the current levy, which is $90,000. So about $90,000 over what we had budgeted, and that's not bad. A $50 million budget to be a little $90,000 over. I know it is over, but that's not bad for, for an estimation process.
Is it, or are you, if we have questions while you're going?
Oh, absolutely, thank you.
What is the levy, what is the levy that you're referring to? Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. The, the grand levy is what your tax bills are. So that is based on the mill rate and the assessed value. The, the thing is, we take certain assumptions when we're developing the mill rate, because not everyone's gonna pay their tax, so you have to accommodate for that to make sure you have the cash flow paid.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Motor vehicle supplemental taxes, we came real close this year. We expected to exceed the budget by about $2,000. In the past, it's been a lot more than that, but we really fine-tuned the number. The prior year tax collections will exceed the budget by about $110,000. Again, that's by the excellent work of our tax office, really trying to go after some of those delinquent taxes, especially during the time we're coping from COVID, where we weren't able to do a lot of those tax sales and things like that, so we're going to start moving in that way again. Delinquent interest, again, we fine-tuned that number. It's about $44,000, estimated in excess of the budget. Prior years, it's been several hundred thousand higher. Again, fine-tune that number in the budget process. Another big one, we're picking up another $13,000, was in the state telecommunications tax. The state of Connecticut collects taxes on behalf of the towns for the telecommunication towers and equipment, phone lines, things like that. There has been some investment by our companies, Frontier and so forth, putting in new equipment. We benefited from an increased revenue source from that by about $13,000. Intergovernmental revenue is expected to exceed the budget by about $393,000. Of this, $368,000 was for that unanticipated municipal revenue sharing funds. We've been talking about that all year. The, the entries have been made at this point now to move the funds, those excess funds pursuant to the municipal tax stabilization ordinance to the Tax Stabilization Fund and the CNRE Fund, which governs how that is done. 75% to the tax stabilization, 25% to capital non-recurring, which will help use towards pay-as-you-go capital projects in the future for the CNRE funds. So a majority of that had to do with with those funds. In addition, we've got about almost $14,000 in emergency management funds, funds that we have been working with the federal government on a special grant that came in for John's emergency plan, as well as some older emergency management grants that the state was behind on paying us, and so those funds came in this year and got recorded. The intergovernmental revenue for education, again, another one that we've been talking about all year. It's a little bit higher than what I had in the past, because the, the state had some adjustments that, when the final expenditures from the prior year and how they do their audit and all that. We did get a little bit more based on that calculation, besides what the final legislative approved number was. So that was a little over $201,000. Again, those funds have been moved to tax stabilization and CNRE. The. Our investment income, Chris has just done a phenomenal job, more than we ever had planned. We're estimating it to come in over a million dollars in excess of the budget. That's, with this happening, that was part of the reason through the budget process that I was comfortable with going up, even though we're not sure what's gonna happen after the election, everything else, but with these results, I felt very comfortable and even. That's it. So that's, that's for the revenue side. On the expenditure side, I'm estimating that the, and, and I think this number's gonna be less than what I had projected on July 1st. Just because new information came in, I thought all our final fuel bills had been paid when I did this analysis, and then I found out that the June bills had not. So, so this number is probably gonna come down a little bit. But I'm anticipating about $198,000 not to be expended at June 30th, when all the final bills are done. You know, there's, there's little transfers between, within departments still happening, refuse collection, things like that. Those fees kind of ran higher, but we took some savings from attrition in the public works area to try to cover all that. So those, those little adjustments within the department budgets are, are ongoing till we get the final bills finished. At this time, I still do not see any interdepartmental transfers happening going forward. Again, highly subject to change, and it also assumes that the Board of Education is going to spend 100% of their budget. Now, whether they spend it all this year, I think they're probably down to might be around $30,000 that's not expended, but I'd really have to look at those numbers again. But normally, they will come back and request it to go to their educational reserve fund. So with this analysis in place, I just assume that it's all being spent. Under our administrative budget, that's the town managers, town council, administrative services. We did have to do an additional transfer from savings, $40,000 to, to our legal costs. Our legal costs were just overwhelming this year. And so we did have savings in Medicare and FICA due to attrition, and we were able to take some of those savings and use it towards the need for legal services. There may be some other savings again in property insurance and all that, and that are also used in that area. But also contribute to the amount that I'm showing might be left over towards about $34,000, $34,599. That will be in, in there from some of these other savings. Public Works Department, this one, I had included, thought that all the refuel was expended, showing a savings of $86,000. I think that number will now be less than that in savings. Again, they had, a big chunk of that had to do with our engineering services. We had a lot of projects this year that required a lot of engineering, but the projects were associated with other funding sources. So it did not draw on the general fund use of those services. It came from special cap projects or ARBO, whatever was involved in the project. So that budget had 40, about $43,000 left over as of July 1st. The, there was also some attrition within Public Works Department, again, that contributed to some of the savings, and we used some of that, again, towards the refuse and recycling shortfall we had. The Public Safety Department has about $56,000 in savings. Some of that has to do with savings from the state trooper, with the changes in attrition there, losing our trooper, resident trooper, Kevin Eklund, replacing with lower-level staffing to fill in. We did take, originally that number was going to be about $68,000. We did take some of, some of those savings to offset the Public Safety Study. It's needed because of the extra cost there, so some of those savings were used there. Some of those savings were set aside for grant overtime, things like that, that we might need those funds for. Again, we had attrition and retirements in several departments, our library, our human services, the fire department, the revenue collection office. So there were different savings and payrolls in, in these various areas. I'm hoping next year we're not gonna have so many. Other financing sources or uses, I mean, this, this has to do with the funds that are transferred out. It, it includes the $172,500 that went to the Education Reserve Fund. It includes the money that's going to the Tax Stabilization Fund, which is about $569,000. It might be a little bit more than that now, with these other adjustments. I, I just gotta double-check the number, but I think that's the number. Yes, that, I'm sorry, that is the number that we transferred, $569,000. Part of it went to stabilization, part of it went to CNRE. There was also the normal capital budget funding, which was part of the budget last year, plus you also added over $80,000 for the water testing special appropriation, so that's at $406,000. So at this point, depending on what happens, I mean, the best-case scenario right now that I, I see is that fund balance for budgetary purposes could increase a little, almost $1.1 million. Maybe lower. But I, I still think it's gonna be substantial, and again, the, the major contribution of this is on the revenue side of the excess revenue for investment earnings is, is pretty much most of where this is coming from. Regarding the ECHIP, we don't have all the final analysis and as of June 30th for everything. I still have the numbers as of March. I don't have any updates at that time, but at this time, but hopefully when we get things closed out, have better information for the final cash balance and all that. So I could defer to questions or whatever you need?
I did just want to say for Rebecca. Councilor Buckler left in. Any questions on this quarterly?
I would say to you, I think this is great. Katie's starting it. Please sign your stuff. Lisa, have more stuff. That does it. Signed, also shows the numbers.
I'd just like to say, we always did do an analysis. It may not have been every single quarter, but there was always some sort, it may have been biannually, but this is certainly more structured now.
Yeah, definitely. It's more than, you know.
More than you had?
Yes, so I appreciate it. I know it's a lot of work and a lot of time that you put into it, so greatly appreciated. But.
I know.
But it's great that there's gonna be a lot of investments, it sounds like, again. So as far as I go into fund balance, please, but I think this probably would be a great opportunity to use it capital items for next year, or something like year two. Like those big items, year two capital deployment. There's $702,300 for replacement of different variables right there, so. That's something we potentially look at using, not all of it. There's definitely significant items in that. Maybe we'll be able to bump up, you know, three or four. Bit more, so now that's just. There, so this, essentially, I think I said it last year, everyone talked about it, put it towards capital items as well. I mean, I know it's a decision for the council, but. So this usually has.
Well, also, in this year's budget, you did use some funding from Tax Stabilization Fund.
Yeah.
You used some funding from fund balance. You know, depending on how the ground list goes in the future, you'd at least have another year of funds available to. You'd at least have another year of funds available to. Try to offset some of that that you've used this year so that you're not having to bill.
Right.
Higher taxes next year, you'd be able to absorb some of it again, um, to, to kind of stagger it out. Um, and use a wise use of your balance, but that's certainly, you know, all of you to discuss.
Because we don't know yet what the advisors are going to tell us. Uh, but no, great work. Katie, thank you for getting this started and Lisa for putting it all together, so I'm done, I have a question right now, comments.
Uh, I just want to thank you as always for doing this, Lisa, I think you've even had to, you know, vouch the lead flags to get here tonight, so we appreciate it. Uh, and also, uh, please extend our thanks to Chris for doing a fantastic job of managing our investment. Um, it's, he, I think he was here at a prior meeting a few months ago and, uh, he's just been great work and, uh, great for the town. I did just have one question, um, that I'm assuming is governed by some sort of policy, but I just wanted clarification. I know you'd mentioned that, um. We got like an additional two hundred thousand for the educational cost sharing revenue because the legislature subsequently, you know, made some changes or whatever. It. Is there a policy that dictates where that money goes, like why, you know, whether, why it doesn't go directly to the port and why it goes with town funds, can you just explain?
Yes, we have, um, several years ago, the municipal tax stabilization ordinance. And, uh, it's a, an ordinance on our books that requires any, uh, state funding over a hundred thousand dollars in excess of what we budgeted. Um, must be allocated seventy-five percent to the tax stabilization fund and twenty-five percent to capital and non-recurring. Um, that is done at the end of the fiscal year because you have to look at other revenues to make sure that, you know. What if we had a really bad year in tax collections and. You know, even though we had those excess funds, they may be needed. To offset other revenues, but our other revenues have done phenomenally, especially with investment income. Um, so the, the funds governed by that, that ordinance. Requires us to move it into those two separate funds.
Thanks.
I have a whole of questions. Um, you are estimating, estimating, uh, at perhaps the best case scenario. Of an increase of approximately one point one million dollars, uh, to, uh, fund balance. In addition to that, we will also be depositing. Approximately five hundred seventy thousand, almost five hundred seventy thousand dollars combined into CNRE and to municipal tax stabilization.
That is correct.
Okay, and we are not, uh, for fiscal, for fiscal year twenty-four, we won't be taking any money out of fund balance, uh, what was that? Uh, budget, no?
Two hundred thousand.
Two hundred thousand, so, um. You know, I'm, I'm kind of adding, this is, uh. You know, we're in the one, one and three quarters of a million dollars to two, two million dollars. Um, in the black, if you will, more, uh, better than we expected out of this fiscal year.
Yep, the majority of it again had to do with the investment earnings.
Absolutely, yeah.
And we did very well in, in tax collections.
Yep.
Um, but the, the intergovernmental revenue, the, uh, investment earnings.
Yep.
Those were the big unforeseen items.
Great, thank you, I, I do appreciate, uh, again, getting these, it's every quarter is wonderful, I refer to them at least once a month. Uh, in between meetings, so thank you again for that. Um, I especially wanted to thank you for the Egypt update and here, it is wonderful to see that. Um, things are maybe a little bit better than we expected, of course. Um, there's more updating to do on that data, but, uh. It's always good to see things going in the right direction, so thank you for providing that. Um, I wanted to specifically ask for you to point out any, uh, transfers of money between departments.
Okay, and I did.
Okay.
Um, I, I talked about that.
Yeah.
Um, there really have not been any transfers between any department this year. We were, um, able because of attrition in certain departments to do it within the department. So, um, at this point, we haven't had to do any between them.
I wanted, I wanted to just point out for the council, this to me is a very, oh, go ahead.
I, I just have to caveat that.
Yes.
Um, the only thing that does go between departments would be for the payroll, um, for the, for the, um. Wages that are, um, allocated once the union contracts are finished, those sit in, in a different department, but that. Gets moved as the contracts are approved or the wage increases. But that's the only ones that went between.
Excellent, thank you very much, uh, and, and just to the council, I think this particular point is incredibly important. When the council, um, and, uh. A budget that goes out to referendum and the town approves a referendum, uh, we as a council have. Uh, literally, you know, we spent time going through every single department's budget, right? We talked about every single department budget when we did our budget process and what. Lisa is just telling us now is that the budget that was approved at referendum by us. Is how the townside money was spent this fiscal year. Um, of course, there's, there's, there is discretion to be able to move money between departments when needed. But we are hearing that that was not needed this year, uh, that the budget. Did get, the expenditure portion of the budget did get spent as planned. Um, you know, within each department's budget, and I think that's a really important thing to. To highlight here, so thank you very much for doing that, um. Big thank you on these reports, they're very helpful.
Cool. Anything else?
Yeah, there's just, but again, thank you, these, these reports, I'm very hopeful. Everyone is involved in fiscal management. Which, uh, has allowed us to with more. Next few months, we'll, um, be able to, to listen to, um, financial advisor. That, but in any case, just having this extra money. Rainy days, or you don't get, get. Tax, which will be sad, or just. Potentially maybe for some, uh, you know, expenses, it's just like I said, we see more attempt to, uh. So, thank you.
Any other questions, comments, nothing?
Yeah, I just want to thank you, Lisa, you basically Ubered up in Florida.
Very much. I made it, thank you very much. Um, we will go on to agenda item eight point two, which is the consideration of a resolution approving the revised. Assistant Town Planner Jer, uh, Town Planner Job Description.
Great, thank you Chair, so, uh, we're, we're, we're. No extra expense to the town, we are changing the job description. Um, and this is a, a lot, a lot to do with part of our succession plan, uh, in coming in, but to add, uh, an assistant town planner job with me. Uh, we have Dave Cochran, uh, who's going to, can explain it better than I, and also Mike Wilkinson, bring any other questions involved. Uh, in this process, so, uh, Dave, you want to kind of give a, a brief overview of what we have here?
Yeah, absolutely, so, um, if we go back to pre-two thousand twenty-one, before I was hired, the, uh. Town had three full-time employees in the planning department, which included the director. An assistant planner and an executive secretary. Um, in the last couple of years, what we've done is we've not filled that assistant planner position, we've left it budgeted in case we needed to. And we've hired out for, um, uh, consulting services to fulfill the assistant planner role. Uh, what we proposed the budget this year and, uh, was to, uh, zero out the executive secretary line. And, and, uh, hire the assistant planner role, which, uh, more sort of accurately reflects the duties that the executive secretary. Currently actually performs. Um, we'll continue to maintain the consultant Purnell, um, as we, uh, continue to train this assistant planner, I would expect that we would be able to. Overtime reduce our, our contract with that consultant, uh. Uh, potentially next year, so, um, yeah, and, and then the other, uh, item that this provides us with the flexibility of is it's, uh. Uh, gives the town some backup, um, uh, night meetings, um. You know, right now, I, I attend between five and ten a month. But I, which is part of my job, but I don't have any backup, right, and I'm sick, uh, there's nobody to staff, there's nobody to cover. Meetings either get canceled or go on staff, so this gives us somebody who can, uh, come in at night if I, uh, have the flu and can't make it to a planning and building meeting or, or whatever the case may be, so. But, that's, uh, that's pretty much it, yeah.
Do there are any questions about this? This is already part of the budget plan for the. Is that why you're just saying? Okay. So we need to approve the revised. Non-union group assistant town planner job description. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so we have that, um, draft resolution in our packet as agenda, um, agenda item eight point two. Is there a motion to approve this draft resolution?
So.
Moved by Council Moran, is there a second? Counselor Newton, thank you, is there any further, um. Questions or comments about this change? Okay, um, back to all being in person now, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that is unanimous. Uh, now we're on to eight point three, which is appointments to vacancies on various municipal boards and commissions. Um, and it looks like we have two reappointments for consideration.
We do, um, so Janet Moore is on the Housing Authority and Carrie Schneider is on the, uh, Agriculture Commission. Um, they've been, you know, serving, uh, all the boards, uh, we really appreciate volunteers for all of our boards and commissions, um. The town, you know, really relies on volunteers to step up, um, and so, yeah, I think, uh. We would love to have Janet and Carrie, um, reappointed for their next, for another.
Are there any questions about the? Okay, um, is there then a motion to approve these two reappointments?
So moved.
Counselor Moran, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Moran. Any further discussion about this?
One thing.
Please.
Uh, just want to thank you, Sarah, but, uh, as always, um, you know, especially when we get lots of emails with interest and things like that and managing expiring terms and all that, couldn't do it without you, so appreciate it, thank you.
And thank you, uh, Counselor Moran and Counselor Shay, uh, for your work. Spending, um, all of the, so thank you. Any further comment? No, okay, all in favor of this, these two reappointments? Please say aye, say aye. All right, we are on to item nine, which is all business. Plane, so there's none there. It is now time for your thunder, Ryan, uh, town manager report, please.
High expectation.
Yeah, you wouldn't want to say.
Let me come out with some good news right away to those watching virtually, the new owl is here, got here about three thirty or four o'clock today. We did not dare try it with our luck to have it go off tonight, we want to test it. We, we tinkered around with it, but let's just do it right, so in the next meeting, hopefully, if it all goes well, uh, we'll have the new owl. Uh, as you know, as you're aware, there's a lot of new laws, uh, going into effect or that have approved up through this latest legislative session. Uh, we get it, we get several, uh, people give us analysis on all those laws, we go over the, the process that, that I undertake here as I review them all. Uh, and then kind of, uh, pick which department had it's going to affect, sometimes there's multiple. Uh, sometimes it affects different commissions, um, each of those are identified. They're about to work hard to get all the, um, directors involved in the commissions. And then, uh, I will meet with them separately, um, to discuss how it affects the town and to make sure that they have. A good graph for those, that, that's, uh, something that we, we started undertaking this week. Um, virtual, you know, we're going to put that on, on the agenda coming, uh, coming up, uh, soon. Also on the coming attractions, we have Jason, uh, from, um, our assessor's office. Uh, to talk about ordinance sixty to review, um, he's also been active on a lot of the foundation stuff, there's been some emails back and forth, he has to provide information, he's handling all of that. Uh, if I didn't respond directly, I had a great meeting today. With, uh, Lieutenant Hayward from Troop C, um. On things, public safety in town, uh, it went, went great, uh, it's nothing to do with, he has no say in the contract or anything like that, this was just a nuts and bolts type of thing. I, and also looking at the hiring of a new administrative trooper, which, uh, will be moving forward next week in his, but he's, uh, graciously invited me to be involved in that process. Uh, the surplus that we approved a few weeks ago went well. We're in the neighborhood of thirty-two thousand dollars, I'm going to shake out for that, um, and we were, we have more than, more than half collected, and I saw people coming in today. Uh, to pay as well, uh, with that, I, again, as I discussed, I could like to get a golf cart. At about a third of what the surplus will, uh, turn over, uh, for our rec department. For Bruce and for the, uh, mainly for the permanent celebration committee. Uh, for all that they do and the ad commission, you know, with the partners markets and, and, uh, all the great events that they run. I'd like to have that availability, uh, we would price it out, Scott, um, Lappin's already gone to a few places just to kind of look. Prelimarily, it would go to council, though, um, if we were to do that, uh, to, to, to have you guys look at and approve. I met with, uh, Dr. Willitt today, uh, just on our bi-monthly meeting, it was just another great meeting, staying in communication. Uh, we talked about capital improvements, ones from previous years where they are, um, we talked a lot about security. Um, both hard and personal, uh, and, and, uh, again, very positive, a great meeting, uh, with Dr. Will, we also talked about. Um, the fields, the athletic fields, as there'll be an agreement that, uh, we'll sign at some point, uh, and I believe that. Might have to pop front of council, we'll see, um. But, you know, you know, what's coming out of it, and when, which I noticed this last capital plan and, um, or back improvements, uh, plan. Is that we have so many ball fields in town and there's no real schedule, um, to fix. You know, it's just been kind of half, half, you know, when the ugliest one pops its head up, we fix it and, uh, you know, it's kind of a lapable kind of thing. I'd just rather have, um, some sort of professional plan, going out twenty years, you know, basically, um, and, and that's what, uh. Counselor person, you just mentioned with the recreational board, my, my idea to Bruce was, let's not us, have us create it, let's do it collaboratively with the red board. Look at which fields are the worst, try to schedule out, uh, repairs. If, once, once they approve that schedule, which should be pretty soon, right, I believe, uh, they, they, they got to look at it this last meeting.
Yeah.
And then I guess they'll approve it or something along those lines, but I know the top of the heap is the girls softball field. In talking with Dr. Willitt today and talking with Bruce today, uh, that's going to be the next field that will get a, uh, uh, overhaul. Uh, we've thrown some market money at the Little League and softball, uh, but the majority of it went to the, the baseball side, so I really want to give a boost to our softball.
Are you talking about the one at First Grove?
I am not talking about the one at First Grove, interesting, I didn't, I, I was unaware that was even, I thought it was at the, the park, but it's actually at virtual.
Well, it's, you know. It's close enough. Yeah, that's close enough.
So, um, you know, this is the one at. The Talon Middle School or the old high school, but it's, you know, down the hill and it's just poor company, we had to do some, I don't want to say emergency repairs, but, you know, it's ankle breakers are out there that we had to fix. Bottom line, professional plan, looking out at ten to twenty years and a schedule to fix these fields rather than just. Pulping and end bag borrowing and stealing to, to fix them. Um, so good, uh, good meeting with Walt and then again Bruce's, as, as, uh, Congress had mentioned, um. With, uh. The record, I have to say. You know, while I was, I, I mentioned all of the legis, the new legislative, uh, all the laws are going to affect, so we. Understand that almost every department is touched by them, I'll meet with them a lot, I think that the bear of them, um, is going to be. David Cochran, um, Lisa, uh, Megan, uh, and Grants, and then, uh, Jim. Uh, to some degree down there, obviously, Flytell got a, caught a couple, um, that he'll look at and review, but, um, everything should be, uh, fairly smooth, uh, in regards to. Any of those laws, how they're going to affect us. Um, boy, the Talon Youth Services Bureau with the, the Talon Youth Services Community Theater is just doing another. Great job, it's such a, so great for our town, you can pop in over there, it makes you so happy, um. And that's for the Little Mermaid, July twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, and, and I'll post stuff on social media, I'll obviously attend. Um, and some rehearsals as well, uh, to try to, uh, boost interest in it, but they did, they do such a, a great job. Uh, with that. Well, uh, the electric blue, there are a lot of moving parts, um, going on right now. Um, and, and I'll be careful where I move here, but the, uh, liquor commission is having a hearing next week on it. Myself, likely our town attorney and, uh. Myself, likely our town attorney and our town planner will attend it. That would be a roadmap almost for us when we move through our town processes as well. As our hearings are very similar in regards to hearsay, very similar to other hearings that we run here at the town. So we kind of want to get a look at that. There are some other things moving around with that. But understand that we, the town, are watching very closely, working with the U.S. Attorney's Office, working with the State's Attorney's Office, working with our town planner, and with developers and looking at a lot, just a lot of moving parts as we look to make some improvements there. While we're talking about that end of town, we're working, Megan's working hard with Cardinal Engineering to do some connectivity, basically. Coming up with a plan to have on the books here, not that we'll execute the plan, but want to have a plan should grant money avail itself. For us to have a sidewalk from Talon Green area to our, our business district all the way through to the Big Y. And she's doing a great job of all of that. But while we're on Megan, she's, the grant money for the library, she got roughly twenty grand for to, to make improvements to the media center. You know, I kind of wanted to do some on her exit. We found a new vendor who's just been fantastic compared to the previous one, so much more for the, for the amount of money that we have. We may look to the Library Foundation for, we thought we were going to go to them with a huge ask. And as it's turned out, thanks to the vendor, thanks to the work of Megan, the lead asks should be lighter and it really be, some knitters had made some requests in regards to acoustics. We all know the acoustics aren't great in there for previous meetings, so we'll love to have that. The library has been flawless with the new director coming in, so I'm very thankful on how they're running down there. The three million for Old Post Village, Megan's been working really hard on that. And the federal grant, again, it doesn't, the money doesn't come to us, but they need the town's participation in order to apply for it. I talked about the one ninety-five connectivity grant that she's working on. We're still kind of looking at a pickleball court at the senior center through ARPA funding. We don't know if we're going to get that because we did get bad news. I don't know if you knew about it, but through, through desk, we had applied for a grant, basically online safety. But I wanted to have a meeting and a class with some experts to talk about de-escalation and some of the polarization here in town and how it relates to online. And I thought it was a great idea. We have a program, we're an expert. And then the CARPA got pulled up, so we don't have to funding for it anymore. It was a light ask. I take a couple thousand dollars that was approved compared to other people's ask, but I guess the funding just got cut, so unfortunately, I mean, it's just years. Anyways, I'm very thankful for everything we get for the state. We're looking at the, the animal control facility.
Right, before you keep going, on the ARPA funding for the senior center.
Yep.
Maybe we're persistent calls into.
Okay.
The Department of EJ on that.
Okay.
I'd be happy to share with you the person to call.
I would like that.
Yeah. Because of course, anyone could make these calls, so. Go inside of information.
Did they lose the?
The legislature.
It's close.
Reallocated a bunch of ARPA funding in the, in the legislative session this year. And several programs that were set to move forward, some of which were contract, were de-allocated.
As I said with the desk, what a great year to have, you know, and your management come up and stuff, unfortunately it got cut. Yes, we can look to other ways and it was a light lift. We could probably sneak it through ARPA maybe, that's, you know, squeeze it through. That might be a great, all right. Moving on to the, you know, Megan is looking at the dog pound and some, some grant funding for that or different ways to, to approach that. We're meeting with the, our manager, Wellington, to discuss exactly that. It's even in the calendar soon, right?
Yes.
Next week or something to move forward with that. And it, it's in our capital plan as well. What's that?
You're having words with it.
All right, so don't no one bother me during lunch talk. Is there lunch? Obviously, she's been, Megan's been really busy with three, four, and the fire station. Public Safety is having a stop the bleed thing. I'm going to promote it on social media. I believe tomorrow night. They've been doing, John's been doing a great job with all the storm management stuff that we've had come in. Our town's been, again, somewhat lucky in regards to power outages when compared to others. I'd say that's due to some of the tree management, forestry management, things we've been doing here in town. And I want to say that's about it. Yeah, that's it. Any questions? Go ahead.
Okay. Two questions, one comment. You mentioned, Ryan, about the, the schedule for, you know, repairing fields or doing work on the fields, which I think is a great idea. We received an email about tennis courts, which we responded to and we responded to the resident. But does that include, like, this field maintenance plan, does that include your tennis courts, basketball courts, or all this separate stuff?
The basketball court at Crandall's, I believe was already planned out on how we're going to be paying for a safety grant as well.
Okay.
No, the tennis courts is a separate issue. Walt and I discussed that as well today and we have contingency and looking forward. Do we need six courts up there? We have three at Crandall's, a total of nine. How many does the town actually need? Are there any CIC requirements? There are not. You could have as few as one. Four seem to be about the average for towns and six is certainly plenty. And we have nine, although three of those are now multi-use and unknown if they're able to be used at Crandall's for CIC events. To, just to recap, when we got here, the, the courts at the high school were repaired through a grant. About as kind of technically are matched to a steep grant that included the Crandall's courts. Their, their assessment was, let's try to repair the cracks. They weren't overly optimistic as the drainage might not have been done right when the tennis courts were put down a long time ago. We had hoped to get years out of the repairs. We did not. We're going to look at some contingency ideas and to see what we can do to make it more manageable. It, it may come to that, that the high, the high school may in the spring need to use our Crandall's courts. I offered that to, to Dr. Willitt. And we'll explore that moving forward.
Okay, excellent. And then with respect to the meeting at the liquor commission, if you're able to say, is the electric blue as a result of all the things that have gone on at risk of losing their risk liquor license? Yes, okay. And then on a lighter note, just a comment, the library did a touch a truck event recently, and my son went in a van. So thanks to the library and everyone. That's all.
I forgot to say, I wanted to thank Aaron Bartlett, our, our tax collector. You know, she was really put to the grill here with trying to get those bills out. She stayed a lot of late nights, and I mean, late, and I was very thankful that their tax department got that done.
Yeah, thank you. So I have a few questions just jumping around. So you said you met with Troop C.
Commander Troop C, Lieutenant Hayward.
So you said they're going to be hiring a trooper at Troop C, is that?
That would be an admin resident trooper here, but basically another cabinet applicant.
So in our building?
In our building, yeah, another cabinet, replaced cabinet at the start, where we've shown some attrition savings. And we would, with these, because all the applicants are much, much junior to him. Their intent is to, whether or not, you know, the interviews could not go well and not hire, you know, we don't know, but that intent is to hire an administrative for Talon resident trooper.
Okay, that's great that you're going to be.
Yes.
Need somebody down there too. So then I just want to jump. So the fire station report. So I think Lieutenant will ask me into to have written down an update for Jacob or that. I believe they're going to be coming to, or at least Megan, to the next meeting to talk about the urban grant because it has to come before. So I think to talk about or to vote on.
Okay, yep.
Just want to put that, since you brought up station three forty.
You're talking about the million, right?
Yeah, it was. It is, okay, yeah, it is a million, no. Perfect, yeah, that's what she said. Thank you. And then, yes, my last question was, do we have a final list of what was actually reduced on the town side? I know we, we gave us something at the last meeting about what was going to be reduced, but I don't know if it was actually a concrete thing or you said.
I don't, I didn't, I didn't change anything unless at least something happened. At least it didn't tell me about that list still there.
That's still, okay. You know. My question, what can I do more?
If I could avoid any of the, if something comes up, well, we can avoid any, I do not anticipate. The first one I would avoid would be the attrition out of the senior side.
Okay.
Basically, we're going to wait a few months to save some money, firing, yeah, just a lot, I'll reach to the seniors.
Okay. Then, oh, I think the last thing was the, you mentioned the center and the field, did you mention? And then Billy. Vote on that last night, but look at the minutes, they didn't.
They didn't, no.
No, they.
You said they didn't vote.
Didn't vote, yes. I'm looking at it and it said it's under the universe. Yeah, all right, I think that's all I have. Do you have anything?
Thank you for these, they're always very thorough. The next item on our agenda then is adoption of minutes. And we have in our, for consideration, the approval of the June twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-four regular meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I'm going to approve minutes.
Thank you. Councilor Murray made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Moran. Is there any discussion, comments, corrections on those minutes? No, okay. Then all in favor of approving those minutes, do the same kind of saying aye. That's unanimous. Thank you. Onto item twelve, which is correspondence. For you to check.
Thank you. So, so since our last meeting. Actually, I think it's time to do it. So there's always three more to step down. The permanent celebration committee, so those was emailed. And then concern, President was here, concern about, actually, that wasn't from the person that spoke, I apologize. We got a concern about the sign the other day. And then we got a concern, I mentioned it, about the tennis courts, which, you know, we're sure it's people on the soot. So I believe that's all we received. If I missed anything, I apologize or if it's any.
Thank you. Okay. We will go on to item fifteen, which is chair report. I just, to remind everyone that we are still, Councilor Murray and I are going to need this week to review the town manager review materials and we should have an upcoming meeting with the town manager to present the reviews. Thank you, everyone, for getting them to me. I know I found the spreadsheet, the template thing to enter and do particularly challenging this year. So for those of you who handled them, that was a really smart way to go about it. So thank you. Oh, my gosh. Yeah, it's, it's, it was a thing. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Right, right.
So, Councilor Murray and I will be getting together tomorrow night to talk about them. So we're going down that process. I'm going to do my own shout out for the Talon Youth Summer Theater. As I have been a very special crab lobster in that, in that show. So for those of you who might be interested, The Little Mermaid will be at Talon High School on July twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. And if you're there, I'll trust you. I also wanted to take a minute to share with you guys about a special person who works at Talon High School, Ms. Fontaine. She's the librarian at Talon High, and she's really an amazing leader. She regularly helps kids with writing blocks. I heard she might have helped a few of the recent valedictorian speeches get drafted. During the beginning of COVID, she really helped the kids with their laptop technology, which was quite a challenge. She is the advisor for the high school yearbook and has years of historical knowledge of the yearbook, including the recent change in the new company that's doing the yearbook. She leads the National Historical Society, I'm sorry, the National Honor Society. She really helped the last twenty-twenty-one who had a particular challenge in getting together for safe graduation and class night and their prom. She was instrumental in really helping back classes for kids who are struggling socially or emotionally with lunch period. Ms. Fontaine offers a safe and quiet place to step out of the high school drama and eat lunch. Due to costs outpacing funding for our schools, Ms. Fontaine's position has been cut for next year. Talon High School will no longer have a certified librarian. And all the extra things Ms. Fontaine did will either be lost or maybe, hopefully, a group of other staff members will be able to step up and help support our students in the numerous ways she did. While I am grateful we have a budget for fiscal year twenty-five, our town and especially us as leaders, we need to understand the impact of this budget. I hope that the council will join me in thanking Ms. Fontaine for her years of service and wish her luck in her next endeavor. I'm not sure what to say to the kids, especially the one living in my house who asked where they will eat lunch next year when things get to be too much, or want to know who can remember the fun traditions of their. That is it for me. We now are on to item fourteen, which is communications and petitions from Councilor.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Uticet, go ahead. Thank you.
So I just wanted to think, three, sit down for their years of commitment to Talon. On the product separation. Sorry, Ms. Fontaine, just leaving, just a clarification, though I know the Black Room position was reduced, but I think it's been.
Yeah, a technical, a library technician. So there's going to be. There will be a staff member, but not certified. Okay, I just wanted to clear that. Somebody would be, but yeah, Ms. Fontaine. We need to highlight in her.
Yeah, I just, one thing, we have to come in tonight, speak about it. We had also received an email. The residence private property that the fourth time was vandalized in Talon. You know, it's wrong and illegal to vandalize property regardless of whether or not you agree with the content of the message. And so I just want to make sure that, you know, I'm unrecorded clear that, you know, we certainly condemn any sort of, any sort of act like that. I think when we were even campaigning, you know, a Republican candidate's sign went missing and I condemned that then. And I condemn, you know, any sort of vandalism or destruction of property now. So I just want to make sure. Yeah, I mentioned that. Yeah, just second, you know, can you know the sign? Really doesn't matter. Sorry. Private property. Be respected. True that, better ways to express your history.
We will now move on to public listed participation. This is on any subject within the jurisdiction of the town helpful with the three-minute limit. If you wish to speak and you're in the room, we ask you to come up to the table, give us your name and address. If you're online, you can raise your zoom hand. We'll similarly ask for your name and address and we'll alternate between the two. So we'll start in the room. Is there anyone in the room?
That's time tonight. Chair on the plan was seeing why go Logan Colin. Mr. Foley, please, and Joe. The Historic District Commission. Kathy Brock. Jody. Never planned, never submitted a, a, a plan for a sidewalk on the green.
on the green, never. All you need to do is go to the minutes for the Historic District Commission, it's in the agenda. Kathy Bach never submitted a plan. Jody never submitted a plan for a sidewalk. The Historic District as a whole never did. Never, 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 never did. Please, Mr. Foley. All they, all you guys need to do is go to the minutes and the agenda. Now, when you think about it, why would they submit a plan for a cement sidewalk? And sit here and say they don't wanna cement sidewalk on the green? It makes no sense. It's nonsensical, and it didn't happen. Jody has come up here before, taken the past, and has corrected, Mr. Foley. Please, Mr. Foley. That's not correct. Please check the Historic District Commission minutes and the agendas, please. If you will. You guys should too. Okay, and as terms as the, is the green accessible? Decidence. I spoke to, wrote to, communicated with the engineer designed the green after it was reconfigured, two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. He tells me, he wrote, and I left the email there for you, that those curb cuts are ADA compliant. They are. The ADA says you only need one for Historic History. So you have the green, it is accessible. You have what you want. You have what we want. We want that green to be accessible. Those who don't want the sidewalk, want the green to be accessible. You have more than you want because there are eight. The ADA regulations say all you need is one. And the ADA regulations also understand the significance of a historical place. They say, once you get to the place where you wanna be, you should not destroy that particular piece of property. All you need to do is look at this long list of places that I refer to, and they all say the same thing. Okay, no, four hundred thousand dollars is not a lot of money, but it is a lot of money. We are just suggesting you can make better use of it elsewhere. Take the activities off the green and put them in a place that's safe, that's flat, that's paved. People in wheelchairs can tool around, people on two feet can tool around without any bumps or worrying about grass. And you still have a center of town, and you still have a sense of place where people can gather.
Thank you. Please. Minutes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody online who plays a fee? Anyone else in the room?
John Laughlin, one sixty-eight Mountain Spring Road. Yet again, I hear no comment on my primary issue, the potability of water at one sixty-eight Mountain Spring Road. When is the meeting of the Road Salt Task Force, the day and the time next week, so that I can follow up? Who else do I need to contact to move this process along? Is there a higher authority in this town aside from the town council and the town manager's office? Is the town council and the town manager satisfied with the pace of the town's insurance company was dictating this slow, slow process? Do I need to bring my story to Channel Three News or the NBC investigative team? It is unconscionable that a town can contaminate and maim a resident's property, then leave a person waffling in the wind for years to deal with it. I will yet again stipulate to some progress that has been made by the town over the years, but the amount of lag between different sprints on this project is unacceptable. If this is how residents are treated in this town, then I will be happy to leave this town that everyone else seems to cherish and hold dear. I wish I had different sentiments, but you have caused me to feel this way. Thanks.
Thank you. Online, it looks like we have Kathy Bach.
I can't.
There you go. Oh. Think we need to ask her one more time.
Okay, now?
Yes, I think now we have it.
Thank you very much. I cannot implore the town manager enough. I have never ever, ever. In fact, the night you took the first vote, I didn't even know what you were voting on. I have never approved a plan for the town green sidewalk. I had been called by the town manager, and I did go to a meeting out of respect, both in his office and on the green, and I walked. Primarily for selfish reasons, because I wanted him to see the original plan of twenty years ago, and I left a book with him. But I have never approved a plan. I know that a plan was circulating contrary to his zipper plan, which was up the center of the green, dividing it in half in equal parts, east and west. But under no circumstances was my, did I ever agree to one. In fact, the meeting that I was at with him on the green, a representative, two representatives from Shippo, the State Office of Historic Preservation, was there, and was, if anybody could be less excited about a sidewalk, she was. I don't know how you can ask the town manager to stop using my name, but I implore him to stop, because as my official letter of resignation from the Historic District Commission states at the beginning and is on file in the town clerk's office, if it continues, there will be consequences, and I hate to say that because it's not in my nature, but this is being forced upon me, and I really don't want it. So, Mr. Foley, please, if you don't want to state the facts as they occurred, and you can refer, I will present my calendar and the facts as they occurred, I will call Shippo office, and we will get their remembrances of the occasions. But please stop using my name at least, because my name is what I have. And refer to the minutes of the meetings, the votes that you seem to think took place that didn't. And please, town council, pull the minutes of the meetings. Your meetings included where the different boards came and testified. We're tired. We're tired of this slanderous conversation. We don't wish to be called these names. We don't wish to be attacked this way. You now voted again on a sidewalk. A sidewalk that, based on the question and answers tonight, will take you up and down the green, will not get you into the town hall. But you got a sidewalk tonight. It is contrary to your town plan of con, of conservation development, because it's concrete. It's not porous. Congratulations, you've made history. Thank you for your time. Good evening.
Thank you. Alright, anyone else in the room? Anyone else online? Alright. Let's go. Online? Okay, seeing no more papers for public comment. We're now on adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So.
Oh, everyone. Alright, so we're gonna go with Mary. Second by Council, and is there any objection? Any objection? No objection. Without objection, then we are.